...here, there he is to serve, in that man and in that spirit we also want to recognize, and as the God is mine, and the rest is actually where it is mine, uh, you can stay focused on those who are not able to say, let us pray. Gracious God, be, be thankful for safe travel, uh, for those who come from across the state to the business of people. Pray, Lord, that our hearts and minds will be united, focused, always to deal with the issues, and yet we're going to still be able to focus our minds on doing your work, versus not, always to do what we've been called to do. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
President Love, ladies and gentlemen.
Our pledge allegiance...
...to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on a nation in power, and universal liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This is my call. My call. It's up to him. It's up to him. It's up to him. And now he's from down the center. He's... 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 He's...
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the dispensing, reading, and welcoming to the nation.
Without objection. So ordered. Let's speak for President Martin. You're recognized.
I'd like to, Mr. Speaker, I move that the permanent rules of order on the House Representatives from one hundred and twelve chair assembly may adopt these permanent rules of order for the second and third day session with the following adjustments. Rule number seventeen, so that all contacts in the back of court and member houses and memorializing resolutions can be placed directly on the next consent calendar. Rule number forty-nine, forty-eight dial rule, so that all bills moved from calendar rules can be set on the next court calendar. Rule number forty-nine, the twenty-five bill limit rule, so that more than twenty-five bills may be placed on the calendar for final consideration on any one day. Rule number fifty, seventy-two hour rule for posting the consent calendar, so that all bills and other bills and resolutions on calendar rules can be placed on the next consent calendar on the day of the session. Rule number fifty-nine, notice provision, so that all bills from the Senate messages can be announced and or automatically placed on the next message calendar. Rule sixty, so that notice on proposed amendments that you give in two hours prior to the start of session on the day of consideration. Rule sixty-five, to set the standing committees in the second and third day session and to allow the speaker to report the calendar rules immediately. Rule number sixty-seven, so that the committee or subcommittee meetings can be held at times older than those specified in the, in the House schedule and with less than seventy-two hour limits. Rule seventy-one, the twenty-four hour rule that requires all amendments to be available to members twenty-four hours before consideration on the floor. Rule eighty, dash one, so that all bills reported out of subcommittee can be heard on the next local committee, local committee calendar without waiting a week. Rule number eighty-three, dash one, so that all bills reported out of committee can be heard in the next committee or subcommittee without waiting a week. Rule eighty-three, dash one, so that items in committee, the subcommittee can be placed on the next calendar without standing a week to three thirty at either place of deals unnoticed. Rule eighty-three, dash two, so that committees may consider viewers without a mandatory spot for that's affected in the Senate.
You've heard the motion. Any objections? No objections.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I don't have an objection, I just like to state that these are the same rules that we normally, uh, amend for flow motion so that bills can continue to move, uh, throughout the process.
Mr. Speaker, that's correct. These are the same permanent rules that we were operating under during the recession with the flow motion built in so that bills can move through the system more efficiently. Your case.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Any further discussion? Without objection. So ordered. You got it. Next word, Mr. Speaker.
Welcome to the honorary.
Welcome to the honorary, and we'll see you in recognition. Chairman Kerschel.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I apologize and nervous about here, but it's maybe the only opportunity I've had is for never in session on October the eighteenth, and it's a very special birthday at my house. Miller Highlight Kerschel, the champion of dogs, turds, pigs.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, members, my sister Barbara, who we didn't know and seen with me in, uh, my travels, uh, turned, uh, her birthday was yesterday. And this was the first time my sister, she lives in Texas, this is the first time she was home for her birthday in over twenty years, so, uh, we wanted to celebrate her. Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you very much.
Indeed. Great house. Great house.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome the newest member of this chamber, Representative Greg White, the Republican.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd just like to take, uh, the opportunity to congratulate my brother. Happy birthday. Um, he's eight years older than I am, so, uh, it's very special since we lost, um, our middle brother in December, so I just want to say happy birthday, Gary, and I love you very much.
Um, my daughter, my little daughter, turned nine yesterday, and, uh, I wish her a happy birthday.
Representative James.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today is my daughter's ninth birthday, so please wish powder and everything's a happy birthday. Thank you.
Representative Parsons.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and members, today we lost an American hero in Secretary Colin Powell. He is, uh, African-American history. He is American history. He is, he was a remarkable individual. He didn't let partisan shit get in the way of truth and decisions that he made, and I want to stand and recognize him, and if we can have Representative Shaw to say a prayer for the veterans, you know what?
May we give attention. Father God, we thank you for the life. General Powell, thank you for all that you did through him for us, and now we pray that you would strengthen this family, and you would give up a line, say to them, that this is not the end of life, but the very beginning of life evermore. It is in Jesus' name we pray to heaven for a right hand. Amen.
Representative Parsons.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Hazelwood.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to take this opportunity, since so far he hasn't, to recognize the bear hat of Representative Sam Wilson, my friend, Pam, is in, uh, what's here, so I love him.
Representative Gray, you want some?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Members, I want to say a sincere thank you to all of you who sent cards and condolences for the recent death of my son, followed by the death of my sister. It meant a lot to me to receive those, always a part of it. Thank you.
Representative Green.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, members, I want to say thank you for your prayers and your support, especially for the governor visiting as well, Mr. Speaker, Humphreys County, the flood, the loss of lives in Wrigley, Tennessee, uh, the devastation is real, over six hundred homes lost or uninhabitable, over fifty-eight businesses, loss or damage that we're just trying to restore to those folks, and that the terrible catastrophe commenced, they're going to be digging out from, for some time now, but once again, thank you for your prayers and your support for Humphreys County.
Representative Love.
I want to give a, a shout out to happy heavenly birthday to my angel baby Dallas on yesterday, he would have been two years old, so I want to thank all my colleagues for all the support you've shown me through such a difficult time these last two years.
Representative Bird.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, I want to take this opportunity to, to thank everyone for the texts, cards, and especially for your prayers during my illness, so thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As someone had just said, we are not here to hold him, we're not here in October, but since we are, I'd like for us to be reminded that October, we recognize the message of violence in October, and all of the citizens across the state of Tennessee who may have experienced some kind of domestic violence, we want to just pray for them if you will, and I'd like for this house to just recognize those, thank you.
Any further recognition? Next word, Mr. Speaker. Answered up to resolutions. Clear language, you're right, Congressman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the oral resolutions, we're with the law, we're with the present, we're with seventeen, we're placing them in the ten calendar for the standing committee.
Without objection, so ordered. Next word, Mr. Speaker.
City's own resolutions, we gradually were memorializing.
Clear language, you're right, Congressman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the oral resolutions, we gradually were memorializing, filing the best, placing them in the ten calendar, so we're with seventeen.
Without objection, so ordered. Next word, Mr. Speaker.
Resolutions lined up.
Clear language, you're right, Congressman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, with all resolutions lined up, we're with your current standing committee.
Without objection, so ordered. Next word, Mr. Speaker.
Answered up to amendments.
Clear language, you're right, Congressman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, with the passwords one, two, three, we wish to pass the first consideration.
Without objection, so ordered. Next word, Mr. Speaker.
City bills on first consideration, city bills on second consideration, House bills on taking consideration, positions, memorials, reports, stake committees, reports, terms of late committees, calendars, Mr. Speaker, sorry, Mr. Speaker, unfinished business.
Unfinished business, any answer?
I move that the rules be submitted for the year in consideration of H R number nine.
Mr. Speaker, we have captured. House's own resolution now, Representative Lesby, our resolution, honor the life and memory of Representative Jim Colley in Harvard. You've heard the caption, any objections? Without objection, rules, Mr. Speaker, Representative Lesby.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move with the adoption of H R number nine, and all those voting in the permanent to be listed as co-part sponsors with leadership first of the Shelby County delegation, and I yield my honor to Chairman Dasey.
Without objection, do the number one, Senator Dasey.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Members, we are going to take a moment and remember our dear friend Jim Colley, and just going to tell you a quick story about him, and then with your notice, Mr. Speaker, I'm going to yield the floor to one of our colleagues. Not long after I got elected, we were at a dinner somewhere, and I had the occasion to sit beside Representative Colley, and I had known him very well, and he, if you knew him, he had this infectious laughter and just a warmth to him that, uh, we all should be lucky enough to have that warmth that he had, and something came up about a person in Washington, D.C., and I was saying, oh, they're such a liberal, and Representative Colley said, yeah, but he's actually a really great guy, and to get on the screen, you know, when you first get into your kind of green, your little Judge Miller, and he said, Jerry, and he started listening to things, and this person's accomplished, and, and he said, he's one of the best constitutionalists in America, and he started saying things about this individual in D.C., and it was one of those moments in my life, and I was like, you know what? We are so partisan if we're not careful, that we'll refuse to see the good in somebody across the aisle. And I learned from Jim that regardless if I disagree with your policy or not, and regardless, I think your policy is really, really wrong, the truth is, what I learned from Jim Colley is a lot of times, your heart's in the right place. I think sometimes from the Democrat side and the Republican side, we think when somebody's doing an action, that, oh, there's something sinister going on there, or they're just trying to hurt this, and, and I learned from Jim that that just simply is not always true. And, and it, it was one of those times in life that you can always go back to, one of those not-so-moment, that Jim taught me, just because they're on the different side of the aisle, means nothing, that this isn't a wonderful human being, that's had a huge positive impact on this country, and Representative Colley, we miss, I feel sorry for you all that didn't get to know him, and for those that did get to know him and enjoy him and love him, we will miss him, pray for his family, and, uh, you will slumber to serve him. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I yield.
Yeah, it's pretty tough act to follow, and I won't even try, I'll just say this, for those of us that served Jim Colley, you know, you kind of wonder when you're gone, folks should kind of remember about you when you, you passed on to another place, and I know that when Jim Colley reached the pearly gates, he threw his arms out wide, and he said, hey buddy, good to see you, I love you, man, and y'all, I used to think maybe we were just so close, he did that just for me, but it was everybody, and so I hope we would all show that type of love for one another, and as his family is mourning today, I can only smile because I know that our lives were made richer because Jim Colley, Representative State Representative, served this community up here very, very well, and I want to thank Representative Lesby for bringing a resolution today, uh, to honor his memory because today was his funeral, and so I know we're missing, this world's a little darker with his absence, but, Mr. Speaker, thank you for my honest honor here tonight.
Clear camera.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Representative Colley and I go a long way back. Uh, first got here, he sat right next to me on the other aisle, and I didn't realize he'd always hit me a white turn for me, but he was willing to share with me, and H R, new protocols, the rules, and things that he didn't necessarily have to do, and I appreciated that. Colley was a champion for human trafficking, sex trafficking, and we did so much great work together because it was something he really cared a lot about, and I appreciate what he did for our state, and making our state number one when it came to support to the victims. He was passionate about that, and he and I shared a lot of memories around, uh, the Southern characters, classic, uh, war film, Vietnam, all of these things that he was so passionate about, that he was willing to share with everybody he knew, and I know some of you all heard of his words. Last thing I'll say for Representative Colley, is he did a great spirit. He had a loving spirit. He had a spirit that I would like to invoke right now, I wish you know, that we all feel that spirit, that we can reach out to one another and say, I love you, man, or reach out to one another and say, I could disagree with you, but I understand where you're coming from. I would like to invoke the spirit of Jim Colley right now today, and all the things he stood for in this chamber, even when it was against the grain, and we appreciate his service to this state, and his family for the sacrifices they made, allowing us to share him. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, members.
Representative Mitchell.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, I do it an honor that I got to know Jim Colley. Uh, Jim Colley, I knew public schools had fired him offender from the day he walked through those doors to the day he walked out of those doors. Education is better in this state because Jim Colley lived in this state. From educating children to fighting for, for education in this state, he did his best, he did a job well done, and, you know, I don't guess Jim and I ever talked about anything other, any other politics, we never talked Democrat, Republican politics, I think the only thing about issues or policy Jim Colley and I ever talked about was education. Beyond that, we talked about each other's families, lives, and I think that's what we need to do more often in here is, as previous speakers have said, is find common ground, you know, sometimes, you know you're not going to agree on a lot of things, if you're old enough, maybe not agree on a lot, I don't know, we never tried to find out the things we disagreed on, but when you, when we agreed on, we worked and tried to do our best on that subject, and I know Jim Colley accomplished that, so, uh, I'm happy, I, you know, I'm lucky I got to know Jim Colley. Thank you.
Representative North.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Speaker. About a month and a half ago, I think Jim Colley moved into my neighborhood, when I found out that he called it, and he invited me to dinner, both solid, on a dinner, a steak restaurant, that's in the city, and once we got here, order what you want, which I did. Pretty big steak, and Jim, as he was eating, he said, that's a pretty big steak, so I said, order whatever you want, I did, um, you can't say enough about Jim Colley, and the kind man that he was, the kind man that he is, and of course we knew that he loved China, for whatever reason, he always wanted to apply, it's all the basic good, so I was fortunate enough to make that trip with him, and it was twelve days, five different cities, but I didn't realize until we actually landed, country, that he was going to be my roommate, and I said, no, under no circumstances am I going to sleep with this guy for twelve days, I don't know, he's snowing, he's toxic, he's sleeping, and I'm confused of doing it, so, but it was the best time that I've had with a colleague, the best time, we had a great time together, I'll never forget that, never forget the times that we spent together, we talked together, and it's always, I've never seen him with an angry frown on his face, it's always that smile, cool, calm, and collected, Jim Colley, we will miss him. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and Jim and I are good friends, and I just wanted to share the funny side of Jim, great public policy guy, great friend, just all-around great guy, but playing off what Representative Larry Miller talked about, he loved China, and so one evening, we met up with several professors from the University of Wuhan, and they brought a beverage with them, and I believe the representative from, was with us that night, who else is in this room, I won't, I won't call you out, it was the worst taste of stuff I've ever had, I mean, but it's an insult to, to that culture, if you participate in their beverage that they drink, and they brought these little glasses, I think we call them shot glasses, if you can make a rap, Jim was smart enough to know to set off in the corner, three times later, I'll pretend this won't be a long night there, but they kept looking over at Jim, and they'd say something to each other, you know, Jim, don't get us all in trouble, and, uh, so finally, you can tell they're getting a little upset because Jim wouldn't participate, so after the third round, Jim walks up, he takes eight ounces, and pours this rock gut stuff in his eight ounces, pounds that thing down, slams it on the ground, the Wuhan professors look at each other, talk, 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 we done, so I thank Jim Colley for saving from a long night.
Any further comments? All right, Representative Lesby, move to the adoption of House one resolution, not under the Department of Defense, and any questions to the question? Seeing none, all those in favor of House four years, would you say no? Does anyone say no? Has, had, has a party to go, objections, please, we're serious today. Um, fellow members, I believe we have the truders to come back that would like to be read out of House. Senator, you're right, Congressman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senate has completed the, uh, organization, the Senate, uh, session, General Senate session, we're ready to conduct this. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. We're going to appoint our truders to Senate. And to Senate is Representative Lafferty, who serves as chairman, Representative Eldridge, and Representative LaMarr, and our delegation to those who have to govern will be Representative Luthen, who will be the chair, Representative Hilton, and Representative Harris. We're agreeing, recess, and all the rest.
I think what I'm going to do, I don't know, but I'm guessing we're going to, when the announcement comes, go back to session with them.
Yeah. They're outside the meetings and they'll...
Yeah, they will be. Committees are probably all in the same room. Okay, then we use the same, I use a fishy fish.
Now, like, I would say, like, these ladies will meet here or something like that.
Oh, yeah, that's usually the call of the chair. Yeah, that's usually the call of the chair. It will be.
Thank you, Representative Moody. And the orders, Laura.
Announcements.
Announcements, and other announcements. Representative Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have here in my hand a card to send to John Crawford, Chairman John Crawford. If anyone is aware, does not sign this card, please go down and wish Chairman Crawford his wishes.
Thank you, Representative Wright. Any more than announcements? All right, we're in committee's time. The Comer's Committee, members, Griffin, Tish, Freeman, Leslie, Griffin, Paul, Harris, Kurt, Littlewood, Miller, Moody, Parkinson, Powers, Ramsey, Travis, Michael, White, Vice Chair, Tony, Chair, Vaughn. Hilton Safety Committee, members, Calvin, Campbell, Chair, speaking, Cooper, Donovan, Keating, Arway, Powell, Johnson, Knox, Lafferty, Fokus, Reagan, Rutter, Smith, Thompson, Vice Chair, Grills, Chair, Terry, by his ways, the meetings, members, Vaughn, Boyd, Campbell, Carr, Faison, Farmer, Dan, Eric, Hasting, Hall, Hilton, Hodges, Mar, Lambert, Littleton, Lynn, Shaw, Winston, Williams, Wyndham, Vice Chair, Hickson, Hawkins, Chair, Haidel. Counting rules, members, Beck, Campbell, Persia, Darby, Faison, Hoffman, Haisel, and Powell, Terry, Kees, Kumar, McKenzie, Mitchell, Lambert, Marsh, Marsh, Reed, Terry, Warner, Weaver, Vice Chair, Russell, Chair, Zach. Next word, Mr. Martin.
Whoa, whoa.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're in the House of Representatives, and you want to use the October, the Montana, October time.
Did you say I do 12?
Huh?
12?
Uh, yes.
I'll tell her, well. So, 12:55. Yeah.
Yeah, maybe we're just giving heads up. Okay, both of the Republican aides said we should come down there. Might be interesting. Because I told them we got sound from their Senate colleagues and they said you might want to come. So I don't know what that means. They don't usually say that. Let's just go down there. If we have to do a live down there, we do it down there off the shoulder. I think we just leave this stuff here. Yeah, I know. We'll just go ahead and do it. I don't know if he's going to say they're going to request that other session or, I don't know. We'll just briefly talk with them. We need to dip out. We can. I got it. Oh. We'll be going back up after.
What?
We'll be going back upstairs after. We gotta go in here real fast. I know. I'm going to squeeze in here.
Here, I can stand in between right here.
Okay, that would be great.
Who wants to start?
Mr. Speaker, this number proved about. The amount of money spending on this project, it has grown from 500 to 800. How did that happen?
I don't think it's grown. I think originally it started out as 500 as the incentive from the state. And then there was a TCAT, there's infrastructure. That number's always been there. I don't think it's grown since the deal. The deal was a deal and there was different components of it that made it 884. It's been that way all the whole time.
Are you worried about the petition that you sent out to members? Are you getting that back today when you set to try to make that call?
Well, all 73 House members of the Republican caucus have signed on to it. We need our two thirds. So it will be very soon. We sent it out to see if there was anybody from the Democratic caucus that would like to sign on. Here shortly, probably within the hour, we will send out the fully signed copy from the House.
What about some of the contents in there talking about taking away some of the control from local governments or from school boards, that type of thing? Why do you feel like that's appropriate right now?
Well, there's nothing in there that says you're taking away authority from school boards. What it does say in there is that we wanted to address mask mandates, vaccine mandates. It doesn't say we're taking away control from anybody. What it says is we have an ability to discuss and put forth ideas, and that's what we're going to do. And the independent health boards or departments or directors, however you want to say it, have been a problem in six of our cities, especially in Shelby County. And so these are the things that we want to discuss. We'll file legislation when it's appropriate. But I think Tennesseans will like what they see.
What would you say to those who are critical of this incentive package for a large corporation like Ford?
Well, I mean, there's going to be people. I think at the end of the day, this is a great deal for West Tennessee. We're going to ask a lot of questions in committee. The return on investment is huge. We know that West Tennessee really needs this project. And they've had 4,000 acres. It's going to bring 5,700 jobs to West Tennessee, which is really important. And so we're looking forward to getting this before the committee and working through the process.
There's a bill filed about one of your members that has to do unemployment benefits. Will that be taken on?
There's a committee, Health and Safety Committee, will be commissioned to hear that bill.
Is that under the purview of the call?
It is the interpretation of the House Clerk that it is part of the call.
And do you fully support that? I mean, it seems like it's creating a welfare program for people who don't want to get the shot.
Well, I think it's a caption bill, so I don't know how you can make that comment at this point. It's a caption bill. We'll see how it goes once it gets there with the amendment that needs to be filed.
Want to comment on how the possible Ford plan to come in a union shop? Is that something that you think may end or will think about spending 900 million, almost 900 million dollars on this project?
Well, I mean, we've gone through that issue with Volkswagen and they voted it down every time. You know, we're a right-to-work state and I think we're all proud to be a right-to-work state. And if they put it to a vote to the employees, we expect the employees probably will vote it down. We'll see as we go forward. That will be part of the discussion, I'm sure, in this committee. When we get started tomorrow, we'll see what happens.
Speaker, two questions, and other leaders, feel free to jump in. So the first one, in the Ford deal, there's this section that deals with public records. Why do you feel like it's a good idea to allow the authority to restrict the access to some of the researches, studies, and some of the marketing materials?
Well, I mean, that's part of what ECD does when they go through the process. So it's something that's already current practice. We're going to continue to ask the questions. But there's parts of that that other states would like to have to compete with us to understand what was offered. And so we're going to work with the department, work with the administration, and understand exactly what that is. But it's no different than the current practice that's been happening at ECD right now.
Sorry, I just have one more question. So on the House draft call that's circulating among all House members today on COVID-19 session, there seems to be some interest in terms of regulating, you know, private businesses' authority to implement their own vaccine and mask mandates. I talked to Chairman Faison for a story earlier this month. And I believe that you said you yourself is a businessman, are a businessman, and you're open to discussion, but then you're also opposed to the idea. So how supportive are y'all in terms of, you know, regulating private business authority to do?
Well, I don't think the call says we're regulating or we're going to force a mandate. What it does give us the capability is to have those discussions about what other states have done, which would, whether it's Texas, Montana, Iowa, Florida. It gives us the availability to talk about different directions. We may go a totally different direction. But the call is open to allow us to have a discussion that we can talk about anything that we need to about businesses and vaccinations and hopefully come here in a week or two with the direction that we want to send Tennessee in, in agreement with the Senate, obviously.
And I think it's important to remember that the Tennessee government, we know that we're here for the people and by the people. So there are several of our members who have constituents at home saying, "Hey, this is what we want you to talk about." Regardless of what happens or what comes out in a few weeks, what's most important is that every voice is heard. And then the best piece of legislation or policy is set forth. And everybody's voice has been heard and they've had their day in.
I also want to ask about unemployment eligibility, that bill. So most vaccine requirements allow you to test weekly if you don't get vaccinated. That's what Biden's order on the big employers says. So why should those employees, if they're... So why should those employees, if they're allowed to test if they don't want to get vaccinated, still be eligible for unemployment?
Well, because I think that's a taxation from the federal government. You saw Obamacare get knocked back because of taxation. I think if the President Biden declares that the employer employee needs to pay for that weekly test, I view that as a tax. And one of the things that we're going to try to do this time is we may move into trying to nullify President Biden's stuff that he's trying to do through OSHA and do a nullification type of bill and push back on the federal government.
Usually if you quit, if you quit your job, you're not eligible for unemployment.
Well, it depends on why you quit. If you quit for harassment, you would be, so it's not an automatic quit.
Didn't nullification by state sort of get noted about in OSHA?
Well, if nullification's good, if you view something unconstitutional, using OSHA and taxation, in my opinion, could be declared unconstitutional, which would bring nullification in.
So do you agree with Governor, with the Governor of the Office today when rejecting the temporary emergency rules regarding the OSHA that back in June? And do you anticipate Governor of the Office doing that again whenever we actually see Biden's vaccine mandates for all employers?
Well, we'll have to see. You know, we've had great conversations with our congressional delegation and people in the federal government in the previous administration in Washington who thinks using OSHA is unconstitutional. That's not the role of OSHA to what they're doing. And so we're gonna act accordingly to protect Tennesseans and Tennessean businesses, hopefully, in the coming week to set a standard that they can't do that. They can't circumvent Congress to do something to the states. If they want to do it to the states, they need to go through the legislative process and not bypass it.
By the way, I will say, and I'm certainly on Governor of the Office today, so Chairman Faeser, and one of the reasons that I think the committee voted overwhelmingly to reject that rule, I mean, it is an emergency rule that will stay in effect for right now, is that some of the items that were in there indicated some, I mean, had some undefined terms. And the whole premise of that rule is that if a whole workplace is fully vaccinated, that you can let your guard down, that you can lower some of the standards and protections that are in place for employees and visitors at that time. And this is information that was from June. I mean, the feds are basing that rule on months old science. Whereas now we know that obviously someone who's fully vaccinated can transmit the virus, can actually still get sick with the virus. Now, at a much lower rate, but it can happen. And so one of the reasons I think that the committee rejected that rule and should have is that it really went against the science as we know it today and went on an old information base on June to say those employers could let their guard down. We'd rather leave things in place that are protecting Tennesseans now and that have worked for us over the last 18 months, instead of just go with the federally mandated vaccine mandate.
Anybody else? That's the termination of the administration and the governor and his office if they wanted to do that. We weren't informed that that's what they wanted to do, so we moved accordingly.
Hey, by the way, I just want to throw something out there. Everybody keeps saying, I know this is referred to as the Ford deal, but this has been a mega site long before we head forward as a potential tenant of that mega site. And I will remind folks that we're not, you know, voting on a package this week that just involves one company. In fact, we hope that it will involve dozens of companies and this is a joint venture between two different companies to begin, obviously with Ford being a major component of that. But for all of us, what we're voting on this week is a massive infrastructure project for an area of the state that simply has not had that for decades. And so as, I just wanted to kind of bring it up and as we're all talking about it this week, that's something we're gonna be focused on, is not just how does this benefit one company and their employees, but all the companies that will be located into that area.
It'll be bipartisan.
Thanks, guys. All right, where do you want to do this? Okay. Yeah, I can hear you. Sorry, we're in the middle of something. Okay, we'll turn it down. All right, he said we're a little hot. I told him we'd fix it. Yep. Yep. One, two, one, two, one, two. Hello, hello. We just got out of the special session. Today, today's about laying out how the rest of the special session will go. State lawmakers will consider two bills once they meet in committees tomorrow.
Kyle, Kyle, thank you.
Thank you. You guys hear me all right? Yep, I gotcha. What'd you say? Oh, yeah. Mic check, mic check. Yeah, today has been about laying out how the rest of the special session will go. Once they meet in committees tomorrow, they will take up two bills. Yep, I gotcha. I gotcha. Yay. Yeah, sorry about that. It was kind of an impromptu press conference. He said everything I already knew. Yeah. All right, starting now. Right at the top. Yeah, Tracy, today has been about laying out how the rest of the special session will go. Once state lawmakers meet in committees tomorrow morning, they will talk about two bills. Now, here's what they are about. One is about creating a mega site authority of West Tennessee to oversee the project. It will have a seven-member board of directors. The authority's job is to develop, operate, manage, incentivize and promote the mega site. Now, the other bill is about approving nearly $900 million, 500 million would be an incentive for Ford and the rest would go toward infrastructure projects like roads and bridges, along with building a new Tennessee College of Applied Technology. Just last month, Ford and battery maker SK Innovation said they would spend more than $5 billion to build a factory called Blue Oval City. It's considered to be the largest investment in state history. At the center of that would be building electric pickup trucks. The project in Haywood County is expected to create about 5,800 jobs by 2025. Now, we spoke with state lawmakers on both sides of the aisle today. And back out here live, state lawmakers estimate that this special session will go until Wednesday morning. Committees start tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock. Now, coming up tonight at 10 o'clock, we're talking with state lawmakers about their goals for that mega site authority and the concerns some have about it. Tracy?